Everybody, please stand for the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with its hands, one nation of a God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, April 2, 2019. The time is now 7:18. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the November 29, 2018, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers is absent, excused. Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present mayor except for Commissioner Rogers, he's absent, excused.
Just want to take a moment of silence. We lost two members of our township employees who recently retired, Bob Rodriguez and Danny Westerlin. So we just have a little moment of silence for both of them. Thank you. Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for approval for March 5, 2019. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for minutes.
Communications?
Thank you, Mayor. Holy Family Church has submitted an event application for Palm Sunday Procession on April 14, 2019, from 11:15 a.m. to 11:50 a.m., starting at 174 Franklin Avenue and ending at 28 Brookline Avenue in Nutley. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Holy Family Church has requested permission to utilize Yanacole Park for community prayer gathering for five consecutive Sundays, starting April 28 through May 26, 2019, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Procession to utilize Yanacole Park has been granted and permits have been waived by the County Parks Recreation Director, Daniel Silvante. I need a motion.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
I just have a question. Why are we voting on this? It's a county park and they're giving them permits and they're waiving the fees. So why are we acting on this?
We put it on every year, just this way that you, it's okay with the governing body. It's on Sundays and anything that's done on Sundays, we usually vote on. It's not necessary?
I don't think so. I think it's just a point of information. Alan?
Yeah, no, no, it's already been approved.
It's already been approved.
Yeah, it's not, it's under our jurisdiction.
Do we have to provide any police coverage or anything?
Not as far as I'm aware.
No.
Okay, so we could just move on to the next one, okay? The Friends of the Nutley Library has submitted an application for a social affair permit to hold their evening tea and book signing event on Wednesday, May 15, 2019, at the Nutley Public Library. The hours are from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m.
I'll be happy to move this one.
Okay. Need a second?
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Knights of Columbus, number 14712. Holy Family Council has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a raffle drawing on Sunday, July 14, 2019, at 1:05 p.m. at Holy Family Church, 28 Brookline Avenue. I need a motion.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Reports, I have monthly reports from October 2018 through February 2019. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a Shatru report for the month of, the month of March, 2019.
Bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for April 2, 2019. Public Affairs, $181,103.65. Revenue and Finance, $6,381,46.3. Public Safety, $51,939.60. Public Works, $55,453.05. Parks and Public Property, $966,519.98. Water Utility, $159,767.59. Total Payroll, $833,296.41. For a grand total of $8,629,126.31.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and those addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
It's a debt payment. Yes. Yes, it's where we have to pay our interest on our debt obligation, principal obligation, and that's the clearing company, yes.
Oh, that's what it was? And there was another one. Lynn Hurst Volunteer Fire Department, what's that for? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only? Seeing none, let's move to Board of Commissioner announcements. The announcements, Commissioners?
The only announcement I'd like to make at this point, and we'll do a resolution at the next meeting, is today is Light It Up Blue in recognition of Autism Awareness Month. So we will be doing that resolution at our next meeting.
Mayor, I just have the, it's, April is Dog and Cat License Renewal Month, and so just the Municipal Clerk's Office will be open until 8:00 p.m., three nights this month, April 24th, April 25th, and April 30th, to accommodate residents who need to come in in the evening for that. And Steve Rogers isn't here tonight, Commissioner Rogers isn't here tonight, but on April 8th and April 9th are the days scheduled for the Free Rabies Clinics. The Clerk's Office will be participating in that to help with their license renewals on those dates as well.
Thank you.
There is an announcement I'd like to make also. Unfortunately, we lost Lieutenant Paul Edwards a couple of weeks ago, his passing, and I've been kind of holding off to make, you know, to do a moment of silence for him. Also, because when I first got elected way back when, Paul Edwards, one of the kindest, gentlest human beings you will ever meet in your life, he was always on me about putting something on the police cards that I talked to Chief Schrumel about, and those words were to protect and serve. You know, he really felt that was a duty of a police officer to protect and serve his community. So I'd like to, you know, get that on the cars painted, protect and serve. I think that would look great, and I'd like to invite Mrs. Edwards here one night, you know, when we do, when we do that, maybe take a picture or something. So I'd just like to recognize that he did pass.
Just take a couple of moments. Thank you. Public Works is going to have their shredding day, April 13, from 10 to 2, in Parking Lot 9, which is next to Chickolini's. Bring all your tax returns. It's always around Tax Day. Bring your old tax returns, your checkbooks, any of your important documents you don't want to throw in the trash. This is an opportunity to get rid of them in a safe and secure way. Ordinance introductions. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one introduction tonight. Each year, we introduce an ordinance that theoretically would allow the township to increase our appropriation cap from above the statutory 2% to 3.5%. We've never had a need to do that, and the current budget actually shows an appropriation increase of 2.3%, so we're below the current cap. It's a, it's a, an expiring bank. It exists for two years and then it expires. So we, since we're below the cap and we have that range, if something catastrophic was to happen, it allows us to deal with that emergency and that appropriation. We've never had to use it, so it's just, it's a good financial planning practice to continue to renew it, but there are multiple constraints that are in place that would never allow us to increase those, that spending to that level. But it's just good planning. So we do that mostly, in effect, it exists as a paper memo entry that we track each year. So with that, an ordinance, number 3418, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank pursuant to NJ SA 48:4-45.14, I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with a notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passes by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on May 7, 2019. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner, Budget?
Yes. Tonight, we have to introduce our budget. We are at the statutory deadline required by the state for introduction. So we're at a point where we're still in the budget process. We still have continued, more work to do to address the budget, so this budget is being presented for introduction purposes only. We are not able to adopt our budget until once, until our transitional state aid is known. Last year, that became known on September 20. So there is a window of time here. So we will hold a public hearing on this budget, but we won't adopt it until May 7. I prepared a brief presentation that go over the highlights of the budget. The budget document itself is available to the public. It'll be available tomorrow morning. These slides will be up on the website as well, and it helps to make the budget itself more understandable. So let me just take a moment and go over there. We'll continue, we'll continue to go through this budget and the discussion in more detail at the public hearing phase, but it's a part to tee up the conversation. So we'll just go through it. The next slide. So when you look at our budget, this is the entire budget on one page. It simply says that we have appropriations for a lot of things. It's the money that we need to spend each year, and for 2019, we need to spend $54.5 million, or $1,200,000 more roughly than we spent the previous year. Including our budget, people don't realize this, is that the library gets a statutory appropriation, which is collected through the municipality and through the property tax. That's 1.6 million, which is this item here, 1,588. So I'm rounding for purpose, it's just these, of purpose. That appropriation is going up $32,000. As a statutory requirement, we can't assume that all taxpayers will pay us the tax that is due. So there's a reserve that is required by statute and by accounting, for accounting purposes, and required by the orders, that we have a reserve in our budget each year. The reserve that we have here is for 4 million, almost $500,000, 4,451,000. What that says is that the total appropriation for 19, 2019, is 57 million, roughly $500,000. Not all of that money has to be collected from taxpayers. It comes from other sources. So one of those sources, for example, would be construction fees, anything, marriage license fees, fines that are out there would be part of that, any grants that we receive. So any changes in that up or down affect how much money we have to collect from a taxpayer. In this case, our revenues from other sources is going down by $294,000, and I will explain that in a minute. So the total municipal levy, when you, and levy meaning what taxpayers have to pay and what we need to raise in taxes, is a requirement for this year of $42,632,000, which is an increase over 2018 of 3.85%. What that means, when you go into the details of what that means, is that the average taxpayer would see, based upon this introduction, an average increase of $175. So, and that's tagged to the house, so if your assessed value is $319,000, the municipal portion would be $175. If your assessed value is higher or lower, that number will either go up or go lower based upon your individual property tax valuation. So, next slide. So when we say the budget's going up and we need to spend more money, the question is, where's that money? Why do we need to spend it? And where's that money being spent? In total, as you can see laid out here, for each of the departments, including the Mayor's Office, we need to increase salaries by $1,45,000. There are others, there are other expenses that, you know, we incur, which one of those is, we have an increase in our sewer charge of $172,000. Increase in our pensions of almost... Okay. So when you break that down, right, when you look at these numbers, right, you start to see that where the money, why our budget is increasing and the areas that are driving those increases. So in total, appropriations are going up almost $1.3 million. We, as a Board of Commissioners, have to continue to work to understand what we can do to lower these increases before we adopt the budget. One of the things that you see in here as a benefit is one, is we have a $529,000 decrease in our medical insurance. And Commissioner, do you want to clarify that?
Sure. We have, we had a 3% increase for our active employees this year, but we were fortunate enough to have almost a 40% decrease for our retirees. And our breakdown is as follows. We have 208 active employees who are on our health plan. We have 144 retirees, all right, that we're paying for. Overall, we had 46 people waived, which means they either had coverage with a spouse or a significant other, all right, or they received an dollar incentive, which averaged about $3,880, and that equates to 25% of whatever premium was attached to the coverage that they had, or $5,000, whichever is less. So we had a significant savings this year, and that, in conjunction with being very diligent and combing our list and making sure that people who do not belong there are removed, and we stay on top of any changes that we have, we realized a significant reduction this year, and depending on how we proceed, we may even have a further reduction, but that's to be seen.
Yeah, so thank you, Commissioner. Mayor, do you want to comment on recycling?
Sure. Changes in the recycling industry are ongoing. There are no markets out there for the recycling material and what we were once getting paid for, we are now paying to get rid of. So that's increased some of our recycling costs. Last year, we switched over to half of our recycling and outsourced that. We paid for that through our, some of our tonnage grant last year, so that had to come into the budget. So between those two, that's the increase in the recycling disposal fees. They've been offset, mostly offset by changes in the department through decreased manpower, so it's kind of a wash.
Do you want to comment on the water deficit?
Yeah, we're still working on the water deficit. At one of the meetings, I said that we were down $1 million, which was not, not true. It was based on the information that I had in front of me, and the water rents looked like they were decreasing each year. But it was really an accounting error, because what happened is each year, the people who were paying online has been increasing, so it looked like we were down $900,000 in rents, but it was that, that $900,000 was in a different account. But we're still down in, in our consumption and our billing, and we're working on that. We've made some changes already, and hopefully by the time we pass the budget, we'll, we'll take care of that water deficit.
Okay. So again, this is where we stand today, and there is much more work that needs to be done to try and address these increases. Move on to revenue. So the other thing that's happening that's causing the budget to go up is that our revenues are lower this year than they were last year. But there's a, there's a challenge with it, because there's a statutory constraint. While we got $4.1 million worth of transitional aid last year, by statute, we're only able to anticipate 85% of what we got the previous year. So as you can tell, you see, we got 4.1 million, but we're only allowed by statute to anticipate roughly 3.5 million, which is a $615,000 decline in our revenue. That's partially offset by the fact that we've had an increase in grants that we have received. One of those was the COPS grant, and given that interest rates are starting to rise, interest, or, is increasing a little bit, when we have an emergency, we file to FEMA for reimbursement. That reimbursement capability year over year is up by $92,000. And there's a mix of very small items, $800 here, $3,000 there, that comprise the other revenues. So if you, you know, if you look at it, the net of that is 615,000 decreases offset by $321,000 increase, the net revenue decline is roughly $94,000. So what we just walked through in three slides is the overall budget, why appropriations are going up, and what's happening on the revenue side, which both impact the amount of money that we have to raise from taxpayers. So what does that mean? So last year, from taxpayers, we had to raise 41 million. Because of the increase in spending and the decrease in revenues, we need to raise 42.67 million this time around for 2019.
If our state aid is higher, in the 3.5 that we're dealing with, that will happen. Otherwise, we have to find ways to climb out of this budget, because I believe we have to achieve a 2% cap this year. If we're able to do that, this $175 increase is not under $100. So we have to continue to work. Okay. Just got another point. So in addition to our operating, we actually could gap one of the best in Palm, and other types of borrow. So as a township, and as a steady area, it's called debt service. So one of the things that we don't talk about very much is the fact that at the municipal level, if we needed to, we could borrow as much as $130, almost $131 million. Today, our deadline standard is $13,700, and when we look at that, it's basically a mortgage that's at 10 years, and over 10 years at 2.5%. So we manage this very closely, and the Commissioners are very cooperative, and we work as one, figure out what we need to spend money, but we stay within our means. So that, two things. One, this number doesn't get out of control, and the amount of debt service we have to bring into the budget stays stable. So we continue to do that. I took this together, because rather than trying to go through each department, which is a challenge to understand, especially as it's presented in the budget document that goes to the state. I prepared this as a summary. And what this says is, for if 2019, in spending, having a need to spend $55.3 million, where is that money going? And so it was the easiest way to do that is to explain, is that, is that, one, if you go to all the way over to the right, included in our budget is a library appropriation, not just a statutory piece, but a part that the municipality contributes. That roughly is about 3.4% of our budget, or about $1.9 million is given to the library for its services. We manage our debt service, which is stable at $2.8 million. It's the amount we have to pay each year in terms of interest and principal payments. We manage that stable and keep that stable. And Commissioner Rogers isn't here, but the areas like health and veteran services, as well as garbage collection, right, that's $3.7 million, or roughly 6.7% of the budget. When you continue to move across, the administrative services, which includes all the attorneys, both the ones that are on payroll, plus the consultants, our IT operation, treasury operations, the Municipal Clerk's Office, the construction office, that all totals to $4.5 million, or 8.2%. When you continue, when you think about our parks, our buildings, the recreation activities that go on, as well as paying for the light bill, heating the place, and looking at those types of things, that's another $4.7 million, or roughly 8.6%. We do have to pay for liability insurance, workman's compensation insurance, as well as, as I mentioned earlier, including the reserve from collectibles, which is another 11.8%, or $6.5 million. Roadways, taking care of the roadways, taking care of our sewer system, street lighting, recycling, those activities that go on, that's another $7.9 million, or roughly 14%. And then public safety, so police and fire services, as well as the municipal court. Overall, we spend $23.3 million, and that represents 42%, almost 42% of the budget. When you compare that to 2014, so the amber numbers basically said, if we were to look back and say, where were we spending money roughly five years ago? How would it lay out? And as you can see, each, that five-year comparison, the numbers are very comparable in terms of percent relationships, but we are spending more money. There is roughly a $700,000 increase in the road and sewer department, a couple, you know, $100,000 flip flops for some of the other departments, and public safety is up $3.3 million. $3.3 million since 2014. So that's just, gives you a sense in one slide that says, it's not about what each commissioner does in his department, but how, the money that we collect, how do we need to spend it? So it's, it's another opportunity to take a, at a glance, understand where the money goes, why we're spending it, what we're spending it on. Because the water utility is in the budget and, and it's separate, I felt that it was important, and I got some advice this afternoon about that, to lay out the fact that since there is a contribution to the property tax for this water department deficit right now, it basically, again, does the same thing. We collect from the water bills and the service charge that's in there for 2019, $4.3 million. Our appropriations are $4.6 million. We have a shortfall of $231,000. And as the mayor's already said, they're working on curing that before we adopt the budget. And again, it shows, you know, 1918 to 14, and the comparative change. And what you see is, is overall appropriations are going up 1.8% for 2019 over 18, and when compared to 2014, appropriations are up about 5.3%. So my last slide. So basically, again, what we've been talking about is, one, we have to introduce the budget tonight because we're at the statutory deadline. We will host a public hearing on the budget on May 7th. Like last year, we cannot actually adopt the budget until we know what our state aid is, and that could be as late as September. While that's going on, the commissioners collectively will have committed to continuing to work our way through lowering this budget as, as in every area that we can to achieve that $600,000 adjustment. A 3.8% increase is unacceptable, and, and I'm not advocating that we adopt this budget in its current form, and we have time to, to work on that. As I said earlier, the slides that I just walked through will be up on the website before the end of the week. Down, any comments, adds?
I'd like to add something. Number one, I'd like, I'd like to thank Commissioner Evans for putting this together so people can understand where their tax dollars are going and where their water collection fees are going. All right, so he did an excellent job on that. And when you look at, I believe it was the second slide, he highlights an increase in salaries, all right? Everyone needs to understand, this is just a portion, and I can only speak for my department. While my salaries are up $122,900, overall, my department is down approximately $683,000, or 5.6%. And I'm sure that's the case in other departments also, and that number may actually increase, all right, as far as what our savings are going to be. And I, I'd like to thank you because I am the one that asked him about the water utility budget, because this is really part of the DPW operation, and I think that the mayor needs to make people aware of that. Although it's not in your taxes, it's still a fee that we pay, all right? So it's something that we also take a very good look at. And I, one of our meetings, and Commissioner Evans and I spoke about this, as well as Commissioner Petrako and the mayor, we spoke about zero-based budgeting, all right? So what we don't do is we don't take last year's number and just add a percentage onto that and move it into the budget. What we do is we go through each of our, of the divisions, all right, in our departments, all right, and we start from the bottom up, all right, as if it was a brand-new budget, to see exactly what it is that we need. And one example of that, all right, are the, the cost for cell phones. What we did through our IT department, who does a very good job, we've secured service at unlimited cellphone service and data service for $39.99 a month, all right? And we are in discussions about making it a commission policy that the standard-issue telephone will be an iPhone 8, which we can purchase for 99 cents, all right? So this is just one example of how we're taking a really close look at how we spend each and every dollar. And this doesn't amount to a whole heck of a lot of money. It's only $46,534, but you put enough of these together, and it turns into real money and turns into real tax points.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you. So in echoing that point, we continue to scrub the accounts. We, in addition to looking at cell phones, we also looked at training. And when you look at the training costs that we incur, many of those are required. We need to train firemen and policemen, and that, that runs about 20, 20, in total, about $21,000 a year. We need to train people in the court, which is another roughly $1,300 bucks, $1,000 bucks a year to do that. And as well as everywhere else where we have certification requirements, we have to go through that. In my department, I spent last year $4,100 on training in total, and about $1,300 in the code office, primarily around roles that have a statutory requirement. So we will continue to analyze the budget and continue to probe into these areas to make sure that we are putting together the right budget as we go forward. So again, as I said, May 7th will be the public hearing on the budget, and these slides will be available before the end of the week. I'd say in the morning, but the way my luck is going, something's going to happen, and it's not going to be up, but they'll certainly be up there tomorrow if, if we don't have any issues. Thank you.
Mr. Petrako?
Yes. I do, I do have a couple of comments. And I just want to start off with my first comment of thanking Commissioner Evans for putting this together, and thanking the whole Board of Commissioners. I, I was hoping that Commissioner Rogers would be here as well, because I'm well aware of the costs that are associated in public safety. You know, and I'll continue to thank all the men and women that serve public safety. As everybody knows, we just got the award for being one of the safest communities in the state of New Jersey. And the cost in public safety has risen, but we are a 24, seven-day-a-week operation. You know, we do this, you know, for three shifts, for the most part. So again, it's, you know, our budget is a work in progress. We, we've all gotten together, and it's just that so many people showed up, I just wanted to thank the commissioners and all the people that serve public safety and, and the rest of the municipal workers for doing a really a great job. And I understand fully that we have to rein this in a little bit, and, and we have our commitment that we'll continue to provide the services that we do in public safety and, you know, do it efficient as possible. So I know that's what we're looking for, and that's what we'll be looking to do in public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Evans, and I'm counting on all my fellow commissioners to put our nose to the grindstone and figure out how we're going to get this budget down $600,000 over the next couple of weeks or months. So that's our goal, and that's where we're going to get to, and I'm sure we will.
Let's move on to resolutions. Oh, one more.
I need to read the budget.
Oh, you need to do that, huh?
The notice. So, so in summary, we, as I said, we need to adopt, so the language I need to read is, "The municipal budget of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex for the fiscal year 2019 be resolved that the following statements of revenues and appropriations shall constitute the municipal budget for the year 2019 be resolved further that said budget be published and Nutley sign in the issue of April 18th, 2019."
It's April 11th.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. It's April 11th. Mine said 18th, so, so April 11th. "The governing body of the Township of Nutley does hereby approve the following budget for the year 2019 for adoption purposes only," so move.
Second, for adoption purposes only.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Can I correct that? It's not adoption purposes, it's introduction.
Yes.
We're not, we're not adopting, we still have a lot more work to do.
Exactly, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci, would you read Commissioner Rogers' resolutions? Thank you very much.
I would love to, thank you, Mayor. Whereas, I'm sorry.
And in here, you guys.
Yeah, we all voted.
I voted.
Just to clarify my vote, I voted aye. On adoption.
Introduction.
Introduction, you're, you're paying attention.
All right, am I up?
You're up.
All right, thanks. "Whereas, public health is a practice of preventing disease and promoting good health within groups of people from small communities to entire countries. And whereas, rather than being a single discipline, public health includes professionals from many fields with the common purpose of protecting the health of a population, these fields include emergency responders, restaurant inspectors, health educators, public policymakers, public health physicians, public health nurses, social workers, epidemiologists, nutritionists, medical and dental health practitioner, practitioners. And whereas, public health prevention not only educates people about the effects of lifestyle choices on their health, it also reduces the impact of disasters by preparing people for the effects of catastrophes such as hurricanes, tornadoes, and terrorist attacks. And whereas, healthy children become healthy adults, healthy kids attend school more often and perform better overall. And whereas, during each day of the National Public Health Week, focus is placed on a particular public health topic. These areas are critical to our future success in creating the healthiest nation, and everyone can do their part to help." So on Monday, we will, Mondays, we will have healthy communities. Tuesdays, violence prevention. Wednesdays, rural health. Thursdays, technology and public health. Friday, climate change. And Saturday and Sunday, global health. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey recognize April 1st to April 7th, 2019 as National Public Health Week. Be it further resolved that the Nutley Health Department encourages all residents to utilize the many innovative, important, and pertinent health initiatives offered by the department to enhance and promote a healthy quality of life. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas, 115,000 people in the United States are waiting for a life-saving organ transplant, nearly 4,000 are New Jersey residents, and whereas currently nearly two, two out of every three people on the waiting list are over the age of 50. There are also 2,000 children under the age of 18, and almost 70,000 people, or 58% are ethnic minorities. And whereas in 2017, more New Jersey residents gave the gift of life than ever before. Thanks to the selflessness of New Jersey organ donors and their families who said yes to donation last year, over 550 people are alive today. And whereas every 10 minutes, another person is added to the waiting list while 20 people die each day waiting for a transplant. And whereas one organ donor has the ability to save up to eight lives, and one tissue donor can restore health to over 75 people. And whereas people of all ages are considered potential organ and tissue donors. And whereas April 12th, 2019 has been designated as Blue and Green Day, at which time residents are encouraged to wear blue and green to celebrate those who have been touched by the gift of life. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey recognize April as National Donate Life Month. Be it further resolved that the Nutley Health Department encourages all citizens to consider becoming an organ and tissue donor by placing the organ donor designation on their driver's license or state identification card or registering online at www.donatelifnj.org and sharing this decision with their family. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas, close to 51,550 Americans will be diagnosed with oral cancer this year. It will cause over 9,750 deaths, killing roughly one person per hour, 24 hours per day. This is a depressing resolution. And whereas, oral cancer affects almost twice as many men and women, and whereas an estimated 25% of oral cancer patients have no known risk factors, and whereas alcohol and tobacco remain the greatest risk factors, and using them in combination increase the risk, the risk 15 times over the use of one or, or the other. And whereas historically, oral cancer has been a disease of those ages 40-plus, but its incidence in those under 40 has been climbing and can now be directly related to the increase of human papillomavirus, papillomavirus, maverus, whatever, and other factors. Whereas, smokeless tobacco is not a safe alternative to cigarettes. Users face a 400,000% greater chance of oral cancer than non-users. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey declare April 2019 as Oral Cancer Awareness Month, and be it further resolved that we urge all residents in the Township of Nutley to seek assistance in obtaining the facts and information about oral cancer, and to be diligent in performing self-examinations or regularly visiting your oral, your oral surgeon or dentist for an oral examination. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey that Meredith Blank be reappointed certified municipal registrar for the Township of Nutley for a three-year term effective June 5th, 2018 through June 5th, 2021. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's all I have for Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. "Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey that the treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of $2,318.58 for Block 7401, Lot 5, so move."
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas NJSA 48,4-5, as amended by PL 217, 2017, C183, requires the governing body of the, each municipality and county to certify that their local units' hiring practices comply with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's guidelines on enforcement on the consideration of arrest and conviction records in the employment decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, as amended, 42 USC 2000E, which was amended on April 25th, 2012, before submitting its approved annual budget to the Division of Local Governmental Services in the New Jersey Division of Community Affairs. Whereas, members of the governing body have familiarized themselves with the content of the above referenced enforcement guidance and their local units' hiring practices as they pertain to the consideration of an individual's criminal history as evidenced by the group affidavit form of the governing body attached here, too. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that the hereby states that it has complied with NJSA 48,4-5, as amended by certifying that the local units' hiring practices comply with the above the reference enforcement guidance, and hereby directs the clerk to cause to be maintained and available for inspection a certified copy of this resolution and the required affidavit to show evidence of said compliance, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petrako?
Whereas the Township of Nutley receives seal bids for surplus equipment no longer in use by the Township on March 6th, 2019, and whereas, Morcahticus, Inc., 247 Central Avenue, a touch in New Jersey, was sold bidder at a 2002 Chevrolet Impala mileage, $103,354 for $10. 2003 Honda Accord mileage, $120,901, and for a price of $325. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey that the surplus items be sold to the sole bidder, Morcaht, Inc. I move resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas distracted driving is a serious life-threatening practice that is preventable, and whereas distracted driving can result in injuries and deep deaths to all the road users, motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists. And whereas distracted driving occurs when drivers divert their attention away from the task of the driving to focus on another activity instead of, whereas in 2016, alone distracted driving-related crashes resulted in 3,3450 deaths and 391,000 injuries on our nation's roads. And whereas in New Jersey, distracted driving was listed as a contributing circumstance in 53% of motor vehicles' crashes in 2016. Whereas the state of New Jersey participated in nationwide distracted driving, 2019 crackdown from April 1st through the 21st, 2019, in an effort to raise awareness and decrease driver distraction throughout, a combination of enforcement and education. And whereas the national slogan for the campaign is, "You drive, you tax, you pay." Again, I'll repeat that. You drive, you tax, you pay. And whereas a reduction is distracted driving in New Jersey will save lives on our roadways, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey that the Township of Nutley declares its support for the distracted driving 2019 crackdown, both locally and nationally, from April 1st through 21st, 2019. 21st, 2019, and pleases to increase awareness of the dangers of distracted driving. Before I move the resolution, a big problem in our country is distracting driving has gone through the roof. There's a commercial that sits in my head, and we work so hard with the Nutley High School students through the years with this, but there's a commercial that stayed in my head when my kid started to drive a few years ago, the one that where the woman received a text from her child right before she drove off a cliff and got killed. So, please, it might be not just your own life that you take away from yourself and your family, but somebody else's life. I think we're all guilty of glancing at our phones when we're driving. I know my 11-year-old son, Salvatore, whenever I'm in the car and my phone rings, he's the first thing he says to me is, "Don't pick it up, Dad." And I don't. So if we could send this message out, you know, the life that you, well, I'm saying by not doing it, might be your own or one of your loved ones. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas the Township of Nutley adopted Resolution 16909, creation of the Township of Nutley Green Team at a regular meeting conducted on June 9th, 2009, and whereas the Township of Nutley resolved that the resolution that they would wish to pursue, local initiative and actions that would lead to sustainable Jersey municipal certification, whereas the Township of Nutley further resolved in that resolution to create the Township of Nutley Green Team to serve as the Township's Nutley's agent for sustainable Jersey municipal certification process. Whereas the Green Team was composed of individuals who are interested in advancing the efforts of the Township of Nutley and the Sustainable Jersey Municipal Certification Program, and that have been actively working as a Green Team for 10 years, and whereas that group has been creating and cataloging significant sustainable actions that the Township of Nutley may pursue, sustainable Jersey recertification at the bronze level in 2019. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex State, and New Jersey reaffirms that, one, the Green Team of the Township of Nutley is active in the community in advancing sustainable practices and actions, including Sustainable Jersey Municipal Certification Program; two, the Green Team has been and shall continue to be composed of individuals who have demonstrated interest in advancing the efforts of the Township of Nutley to pursue certification through the Sustainable Jersey Municipal Certification Program; and, three, the role the Green Team has been and shall continue to be to lead and coordinate their sustainable activities in the community, and move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas raffle applications have been received from the Knights of Columbus Holy Family Council, License Number 2119, off-premise merchandise raffle to be held Sunday, July 14th, 2019, whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by a municipal clerk and the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, of Essex State, and New Jersey that the aforementioned licenses are approved, and a municipal clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license, and move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas Resolution 5519 was adopted at the Board of Commissioners meeting of February 19th, 2019, authorizing a municipal clerk to advertise for the receipt of sealed bids for known project as CDBG Earnest Street Roadway Improvement Project, and whereas the sealed bids were open and read on Wednesday, March 13th, 2019, 11:00 a.m., and whereas the project specifications did not contain the required forms as per New Jersey Local Public Contracts Law, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, of Essex State, and New Jersey, all bids are rejected pursuant to NJSA 40A Call 11-13.2, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, of Essex State, and New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the CDBG Earnest Street Roadway Improvement Project in the Township of Nutley to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and Commission Chambers, Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, April 24th, 2019, at 11:00 a.m. prevailing time, at which time they will be open and read, and move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, all persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine at the interest of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business or being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Amy Christman, 237 River Road. My question and concern has to do with the Parks and Rec Department, and I'm trying to find a valid answer for the concern I have about Nutley United. I know you've told me you're a little bit hands-off with that program, which I understand and I appreciate.
I don't think I ever said I was hands-off.
Well, you're not as involved, overly involved.
I don't handle it, let's clarify and state it correctly.
Okay.
I don't handle the day-to-day operations of that program or any of the others.
I didn't mean to infer.
No, no, I'm not taking it the wrong way, I just want to clarify, and that I give maximum latitude, all right, to all of the folks that are running the different programs for us. Please continue.
Okay. So, my concern and question really has to do with field time in the spring, and how I've become aware of a private entity that is getting field time over some of the Nutley United teams, and I'm curious as to how and why, when they're a private entity, they are not associated with Nutley other than the fact that they decided to take the Nutley name, Nutley Elite Soccer Academy, or I believe it's called. So, I'm struggling with the fact that I know one team in particular, one of my children's team, the time that historically has been reserved for them was a Tuesday and Thursday night in the spring, and now they're relegated to the rink, and there's, the private club is in that field time. So I'm just curious as to why that's occurring, and if you have an answer. I know I emailed you about it, and I know I received a lengthy email back about working parents and kids in Nutley are playing on that team, but that's not really the concern of the Parks and Rec Department for a private club. When you decide to put your child on a private club, you're fully aware that there's going to be potentially driving to different fields, and I guess I'm just really frustrated with the lack of a valid answer as to why Nutley teams are not getting priority on the field space.
Well, number one, there is a valid reason why, all right, and I believe that reason was in fact relayed to you, and in the interest of not misstating everything, Mr. DeMayo, all right, who is my superintendent of Parks and Recreation is here, and he will once again answer all of your questions and explain in great detail about what you're calling a private entity, okay, which absolutely benefits all of our children of Nutley. So if you would, Frank, would you please answer Ms. Christman's questions and concerns?
I'm going to put my back to you guys for a little bit, just for a second. Frank DeMayo, Superintendent Parks and Recreation. I've explained in an email numerous times that private entity, I let you speak, let me speak. So the private entity that you're speaking of is the one who trains our Nutley United kids. You're aware of that, correct? Okay. So in exchange for the training, which would cost us, I know Eric's here, he runs our Nutley United program, if we were not to help them out with some field space, it would cost in excess of $600 a person for Nutley United kids to play. In retrospect, we let our children play for $325. They use about a couple hours a week. It does not interfere with you guys. I'm speaking, so when it's time, you can have the mic back and do what you wish, but what I'm going to tell you is that we have 300 kids in Nutley United. Every single one of them is saving $275 per child. I've explained it. We have Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturdays, our lacrosse for high school, we have, and our junior program, we have, on Owens, we have baseball, softball, adult sports. So I have 300 families in Nutley United, I have about 400 adults who play in our adult leagues. Lacrosse has another 80 families, then we have the high school kids, which have approximately another 30 families or so in lacrosse, all vying for three fields, three fields. Nutley United has given plenty of space. In the spring, Nutley United is all week, every day, the hockey rink, Glot's Back. Owens, we're moving another field over to Booth Park back again, because we're fixing that one up as we speak. In the spring, soccer, as I've told you, is a secondary sport, so they get limited amount of times. But as are the private organization, it's our trainers who cut us a, almost a half-price deal in order to have a little bit of time on our fields. I know you have one child in a program, you've had one or two more previous, so you are aware that this has happened in the past with TSF as well. I've also told you that the time was changing for practices, the schedule was changing. Your coach has that change of schedule, not sure if you got it already, but you will have, your team will have time on Glot's Back, but I told you that in an email a couple days ago, so has nothing to do with you being here, has nothing to do with you being here, because I didn't know you were coming here up until I received an email that you were sending out with some false information to your team. But that's it. It's not a private organization, it is our trainers, who, that Nutley Elite Soccer Academy has 80% of Nutley kids on it as well.
That's irrelevant. It's completely irrelevant if there's 80 kids from Nutley, and whether, if 80% of the kids are from Nutley, it's completely irrelevant if they're training, it's a choice of who you pick to train. Historically, there weren't trainers.
Historically?
Yeah.
I've had trainers since I've been here.
Excuse me, my children, my oldest son who's 18, you started with the trainers when Eric Hess came in, that's when the trainers basically started in full-time. Look, okay.
But I've been here for seven years.
Okay. Excuse me, I think I'm allowed the microphone now, right?
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Christman, please.
No, all I'm saying is that it is a private entity, and there is field space, and I get all the juggling act that has to occur to try to accommodate, but the fact is, spring soccer is a serious sport. Just because it's not, just because it occurs in the fall in the high school, there are thriving leagues all over the country, and spring soccer is not a secondary sport. This town may think of it as a secondary sport, because that's sometimes the impression we all get, but it is not a secondary sport. And whether you're cutting a deal and whether you decide to only charge a certain amount of price for Nutley United is on you. So throwing the rate at me is a bunch of, that's just not fair to do. If you need to raise the price, then you raise the price, like what can I tell you? But you have taken away time, you've given time to a private club, plain and simple, and you've taken that field time away from a town-sanctioned activity. That's it. You guys can think of it differently, but that's not how it is. You can try to justify it any way you want, but that's not how it is.
Okay, now let me tell you how it is, and I respect your opinion, and I respect your passion for soccer, all right? If you recall, I was the person who actually constructed the first soccer field here in Nutley. I think what Mr. DeMayo was saying was that in the spring, soccer is a secondary sport, and we are in fact victims of our own success. Because our programs are so popular, all right, we have limited field time, all right? In our opinion, all right, and we all have judgments to make, all right, it was in the best interest of our people, our children, all right, to give this training group, our training group, a couple of hours a week for the major discount that folks will in fact realize. I'm happy to hear, and I'm going to assume, and I don't usually do that, that you would be willing to pay more money for that training, but unfortunately, there are many Nutley families who can't afford to pay more money for that training. So what we did was, we traded a few hours of field time for a discounted training program so that a maximum number of our Nutley children can benefit from the training. I'm sorry that you don't agree with this logic, and I respect your position, and first you were concerned about your child not being able to play because the program is in fact the feeder program for the high school, which it is, and I told you, we will never leave out any Nutley child, and we included your child, and we, and other children.
That's a completely different.
No, no, well, it's all related now, it's not just picking and choosing, you can't cherry pick.
No, but I didn't even bring that up.
What portions of the story you want to tell?
That's all.
So we did that, then there was the field time, and it was practicing on short-sided fields and where the soccer players in fact work on their footwork, so there was really no detriment there, then it was a question of a full.
No, but you have to get full, you have to get full size.
Excuse me, one at a time, please, let's respect each other.
Sorry, I apologize.
All right? To play on a full-size field, and we in fact accomplished that, we have some full-field time that has been allocated. So there are tough choices sometimes that need to be made, but I believe we make the best choices for all of our children. And I'm sorry that you don't agree with that right now.
No, I don't, I don't totally disagree. I just wanted to bring it up.
But to characterize it just as a private entity to make people think that we are taking outsiders and allowing them to play on our Nutley fields instead of our own children is not correct, and quite frankly, it's not even fair to make that statement.
But.
So, I have nothing else to say on the topic.
It is fair, because that's true.
Thank you.
It is not, it is not.
Okay, and I respect your opinion. So thank you for coming and sharing that with us.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Good evening, Commissioners. During this budget year, the Fire Department looks forward to working with all the Commissioners to make Nutley a safe place to live and raise a family. We remain committed to our oath to faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of firefighter, lieutenant, captain, and deputy chief. We simply ask that you provide us with the necessary funds to carry out our mission safely and effectively. Just wanted to read that into the record, you know, and as I look at the numbers, you know, and I have meetings with my director, the National Fire Protection Association gives us recommendations how to safely man the fire department early for our residents, for the safety of all of our firefighters, you know, as the township begins to evolve, the fire department also needs to evolve at the same rate, so the Commissioner and I are working towards doing that. I could tell you that the hazards within the town, the National Fire Protection Association has three types of hazards, it's low, medium, and high. Only one particular hazard comes to mind, that's the On3 property. Years ago, Hoffman &amp; Roach used to have their own fire brigade, their own ambulance, they used to have their own safety committee, that no longer exists. That particular part of town is going from a low hazard to a high hazard based on the school, based on not having a safety committee, based on the high-rise, so my concern is that the fire department needs to evolve as the town evolves. I thank you for listening to that with me tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Maria Bazza, 209 Highfield Lane. I think this is for the Mayor, it's your department, the Water Department. I noticed that we have a $9 additional fee every month, not every month, I'm sorry, every quarter on our water bill. I called your department, I spoke to the gentleman, I forget his name, in charge of water, and he told me this is an insurance policy to, is this an insurance policy or is it a tax?
Well, it's not a tax, it's a maintenance fee, and some of the things that we've taken over as a township is your supply line, which is the line from the main to the curb, where that was previous to this maintenance agreement, was the homeowner's responsibility. In addition, the meter was also the homeowner's responsibility, we've taken over that, and if you had to replace the supply line, you're talking somewhere around $2,500 to $4,000, depending on the length of it. So the $3 per month fee that we're charging for that maintenance fee, if you calculated it out, if you had a $3,000 bill, would take you.
In all the years I've lived in Nutley, I've never known.
A thousand months.
Yeah, but I've never known. Yeah, but I've never known, my meter for 74 years has never broken.
Your meter was, either your meter was replaced, or the head was replaced in the last seven years.
And how much does that bring into the town every year, for, you know, what, $36 per household?
I'd have to figure it out for you, Mrs. Bazza, but it's $36 per household.
Sure, quite a bit, a lot more than it would cost to put meters in.
No, no, not necessarily, Mrs. Bazza. And you haven't had a water rate increase, you've had two in the last 12 years. So, you haven't had a water rate increase. Still have increases from our purveyors, who supply us with the water. They have increases every year. We have increases in salaries every year. We have increases in help and pension costs. Those are all, the Water Department has to pick those up. And so, the only money we get is through the, it's not paid through tax dollars, it's paid through your water bill. So, we have to cover those increases. In addition, as you've heard, consumption is down, right? So, if we continue to only get fees from just the water consumed, we have these fixed costs that need to be covered. And so, that's why we initiated that $3 per month fee, and we took over some of the responsibility to take it away from the homeowner in exchange for that.
But really, in essence, it is an increase in taxes, because we don't have a choice, so.
Well, you don't have a choice on it, no, Mrs. Bazza, you don't.
I know, because if it's an insurance cost.
You not have water. I guess it's your choice, but.
Yeah, right, I know. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Yes, I just want to thank the Board of Commissioners for your continued support for the Police Department, Commissioner Petracca. I understand our budget continues to go up. We're the biggest part of the town budget, but what's needed is what we're presenting. We need to maintain our manpower at the current levels if we want to keep Nutley as safe as it is. I know Commissioner just mentioned how we received a safety award as one of the safest communities in the area, in the state of New Jersey, and we were one of the only ones in this area to receive that. And it's important that we keep our manpower at current levels for us to continue to remain proactive and protect the city of the town and keep our crime rate low. Just looking at our crime stats over the last five to six years, we've been able to reduce overall crime in the town 31%. And by doing that, it's a great success, but we need to continue to keep our manpowers at the current levels, because we're seeing our calls for service continue to rise, and we're seeing, you know, our crime rate drop. That's due to the proactiveness of the officers that are out there with the extra time to be able to look for suspicious activity rather than just running from call to call. So, I understand, we're doing everything we can in the Police Department. I meet regularly with the Commissioner to trim our budget as much as we can, but unfortunately, manpower, you know, is an expense. But I just want to thank you, over the years, over the last several years, we've increased our officers with the support of the entire Board, and I think that has attributed to the award that we just received in reduction of crime, because without the additional officers, we're not going to be able to keep the crime rate as low as we're seeing right now. Just looking at the Roach property being developed, real quickly, I just took a look at our calls for service in there, where historically, we hardly ever went in there because it was a closed campus. This year, as opposed to last year, our calls in there are up 100%. We've been in there over 150 times already, and the development is only approximately, I believe, 10% developed. So, that's going to continue to rise, and we need to prepare for that, and in the Police Department, we are preparing for that. And as it develops and we receive additional corporations in there, or whatever infrastructure adds in there, our calls for service are going to continue to rise, and I don't want to see our calls for, our time, our response times increase. In some of our neighboring towns, and we've all experienced this, calls for service, the time has drastically increased. In the neighboring town, it might take you a half hour to get an officer to an accident scene. Our response times are minutes, and I want to keep it at that. So, it's important to, you know, keep our manpower where it is. I appreciate everything you guys do for us. Commissioner Petracca's been doing the best he can to keep it down, and I just ask that you continue to support us, and again, we'll try to do everything we can to keep our budget as low as possible, and we want to keep Nutley as safe as possible so everybody continues to enjoy a low crime rate. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none.
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.